Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We are excited to be here for our Hamilton County Board of Commissioners Public Hearing to Consider a Property Tax Levy for the Cincinnati Zoo. I'm going to ask everyone here to introduce themselves, and we'll start way over there.
Kristy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Bridget?
Bridget Dory, Communications Mayor.
Charlie Anis-Pryley, Prosecutor's Office.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Good evening, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, Commissioner.
Leslie Herbie, Clerk to the Board.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. And we are in the beautiful village of Woodlands, so we are in your house, Mr. Mayor. I would like you to come up and say a word to welcome us. Mayor Paul, you have to officially welcome us to your village, your municipality. Right up here, they want you on camera.
Good evening, y'all. Welcome to the wonderful, beautiful village of Woodland. We are just excited, it excites me every time that the Commissioners want to come out here and host anything. We just want to know that our doors are always open. You are more than welcome to be here. It just feels good that our Commissioners are here tonight. So again, Heidi is here. Welcome to the village of Woodland. If you have some time, you leave tonight, just maybe drive around and see what improvements that we are doing. We're continuing to do some great things in the village of Woodland. And again, just welcome here to the village of Woodland. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I did want to really get to say that Councilman Rosemary Brown is here today with us as well, and so I just want to recognize her here today. Thank you.
And I see your interim Village Manager, Tim Ingle, was on his knees trying to help us get our computers together. She's always working, thank you. Thank you very much for hosting us. Well, at this time, I would like to ask Lisa Webb to come forward and let's, Mr. Aludo, do you want to say hello?
No, I have nothing to add, turn it right over to Lisa.
Okay.
So I apologize, that same issue that we had earlier with Zoom is occurring again.
Oh, wow.
So that's where we're just trying to go.
Okay, what about the PowerPoint, is it operable?
Not that PowerPoint will be, it's just the Zoom.
Okay.
You can't touch it.
Collette?
We'll go ahead and get started.
All right, go ahead. I won't disturb.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioners. We are here today for the Commissioners' Special Public Hearing on the Cincinnati Zoo Levy for consideration for the November 2023 ballot. I just have a very brief presentation, there are copies in the back for anyone that does not have them in the room, and it's just an overview of the process that's gotten us here to this point today, just a little bit of historical. The zoo levy was first approved by Hamilton County voters in May of 1986 and was last approved in May of 2018. The last time the zoo received an increase in its levy amount was in 2008. The current levy is .46 mils. It generates about $7.2 million in annual revenue and costs voters just a penny over $9, $9.01 per $100,000 home. I would add that the current zoo levy contract provides up to $7 million annually to the zoo for operations under the specific categories of animal operations, animal health, environmental services, maintenance, and horticulture services. The tax levy review process, the zoo provided a request to the county administration and the Commissioners in November of 2022 last year. That request was for a renewal with a 15-year inflationary increase. Once that request was received, administration and the Tax Levy Review Committee began work on their process. A consultant was identified and hired through contract in late January. The zoo presented to the TLRC at that point. The consultants spent the next several months from February to May working on their report for the Commissioners and the TLRC. That report was presented in June, excuse me, along with a public hearing with about 20 speakers for the Tax Levy Review Committee, and then the Tax Levy Review Committee wrote on their recommendation to the TLRC, or to the Commissioners, which was presented to the Commissioners at the end of June, I believe, the meeting on the 13th. Just a quick note here, on the next slide, the zoo commissioned an economic impact study, just a couple of points to highlight on that, that happens every five years around the same time as the levy. Just items of note, that the impact of the zoo is approximately $8.5 million annually in sales earnings and lodging taxes for our community and our community's economy, and on average, for every $1 of tax levy funding the zoo receives, it generates $10 million in economic benefit to Hamilton County. The TLRC considered three options for the zoo renewal. It's a renewal, a flat renewal of the levy with no increase, continuing the .46 mils. That would generate for next year about $7.3 million annually and cost the $100,000 home the same amount of just roughly $9. They also considered a renewal and increase in line with the five-year inflation policy of the TLRC, which would generate, which would be .48 mils and generate almost $7.8 million dollars a year, cost homeowner, the $100,000 homeowner $9.71. Then they also considered a renewal with an increase in line with the 15-year inflation rate, which was the zoo's request. That would generate .57 mils, would be .57 mils and would generate $9.7 million in annual revenue and cost the resident of a $100,000 home $12.86. I will just note for going forward, I just learned this today from the Auditor's Office, with the ballot levy, there's some changes to the ballot language for all levies, so it's streamlined, make them more understandable to the voter, and ballot language now includes the $100,000 home amount for every property someone goes to vote, along with the millage amount, it will also include that $100,000 home amount for voters. Included in that language is rounding of those amounts, so going forward, instead of the $12.86, you'll see it referenced as $13. So it'd be $9, $10, and $13. On the next slide. The consultant had several findings in their report. Key findings were that the zoo is a strong neighborhood and community resource. Specifically referenced were the installation of LED lights throughout the Abingdon neighborhood, their partnership with Rockdale Academy, Urban Learning Garden, which is a Cincinnati public, this is a public zoo school as well, solar panels, stormwater tanks, and waste management advancement to help the community. The levy funding is used to cover 41% of the zoo's current operating costs, excuse me, when the levy was approved 10 years ago in 2015, 15 years ago, 2008, the last time it was increased, the levy covered 41% of operating costs. Currently, the levy, because the levy has not increased while operating costs have, covers 17% of operating costs. The zoo is 150 years old, with 40% of its facilities being over 80 years old. The annual budget for major maintenance at the zoo has increased from $2.5 million in 2018 to $5 million today and continues to rise as those investments are being made in the zoo. And allowable expenses covered by the levy have increased 79% over the last 15 years. All that, and though the consultant projected that the zoo can weather present economic challenges, including rising inflation over the next five-year cycle, without a levy increase, maintaining that current amount, the $9 per $100,000 home, .46 mils. The TLRC made their recommendations and voted on June 12th. The Subcommittee at the time felt that a levy inflationary increase was warranted after 15 years of flat millage. When the TLRC met and discussed those three options, the majority of the TLRC present voted to recommend the increase to .457 mils. The TLRC did add that any increase in levy revenues would be accompanied by a formal plan from the zoo to the Commissioners in advance of your vote, outlining how this benefit would directly benefit Hamilton County residents as a thank you for contributions to the zoo through their property taxes. The committee also noted that the current levy contract requires the zoo to provide half-day, half-price days, at minimum of one full day or two half-days annually to Hamilton County residents. This was stopped during the pandemic, the last year that those days happened was in 2019, and had not been reinstituted. The TLRC recommended bringing those days back, and I am happy to share that I found out earlier this week, the zoo is bringing those back, and those days are going to be Friday, August 25th through Sunday, August 27th this year. Hamilton County residents can bring identification and receive half-off admission tickets for those three days. In addition, the TLRC has also requested a discussion overall of the TLRC policy and guidance from the Commissioners for future levy revenue, levy review discussions, which will be held later this fall. Last slide here, the timeline right now for the Commissioners, the Secretary of State's deadline for ballot issues to go to the Board of Elections is August 9th at 4:00 p.m. The Commissioners are holding two zoo public hearings on the zoo levy. The first was June 29th at 1:00 p.m. downtown during a regular commission meeting, and then this special public hearing tonight at 6:30 p.m. The schedule and timeline right now is for the Commissioners to vote on the levy for the ballot at their August 7th commission meeting. Any additional questions or information?
Thank you, I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions at this time, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
The mayor from the zoo also had an update on the levy process and information that he wanted to share with the Commissioners as well at this time, before you move to public hearing.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much to the Commissioners for having us, and thanks for this process. This is the 10th time the zoo's gone before the Commissioners and the governors about the zoo tax levy. I'm the last guy left who's been here for all 10 of those, and that is what is creating the zoo we have today. Our biggest supporters, all that time, the way that many private supporters, we totally, by far, biggest supporters of the tax levy in Hamilton County. We recognize that, we appreciate it. Over that time, process has changed, starting in '03, there's a Tax Review Committee. For these five cycles, we've worked with them closely, lots of meetings, lots of tours, very extensive out-of-town auditors, and we were very pleased after working with them, working with the TLRC, that they recommended what we're asking, which is to be put on the ballot for renewal with a 15-year inflationary increase. And we appreciate your consideration on that. Even with the increase, it's bargain, even with the increase, it is the smallest of the special levies in the county. The increase would be 25 cents per month, 25 cents, and the total levy would be $1 per month, $1, so it is less than the different types of schools, et cetera. It is also less than other zoos. An important question sometimes asked is, why is there a zoo? Well, there has been since 1982, when the Ohio COVID regulations have changed, and all the zoos in Ohio have gone before their local voters. We receive half of what the Akron, the Toledo Zoo receive, and we receive third, approximately, of what the Columbus Zoo receives. We also receive much less public funding than any of the other top 10 zoos in America, such as Bronx, St. Louis, San Diego, et cetera, which is a neat thing, not a complaint, it's an example that Cincinnati, in many levels, puts its weight on our way to cultural events, cultural institutions, concert venues, et cetera, and the zoo is fortunate to be often considered number one. We do, if we can get the 15-year increase, as Lisa said, the consultant and the TLRC asked how could the zoo better engage with Hamilton County residents. With that, we could offer a year-round discount, not just certain days, but year-round of $10 off per membership for people that live in Hamilton County, family membership, you can come every day, or $2 off if you need tickets, if you just show their zip code and everything else. So some people have said, why this was we just raise prices? If you visit the zoo, or in really any other venue, you've seen that folks have, based on everything from inflation to dynamic pricing. The auditor said, we fit very well within our peers, what we're charging, so we pay close attention to that, but we need to keep the zoo affordable. So the background on that is when the zoo was established in 82, the zoo levy issue was established in 82, there were three things. It needs to be affordable, what the zoos are for everybody, we're the biggest draw in town after all sports venues, we have a very old campus, 150 years old this week, the original levy 40 years ago helped pay for things like underground electric lines that Mark Fisher and his team are replacing right now, because that's 40 years they get worn out, and inflation's real. As the consultant said, and As the consultant said, and as Lisa said, the basic zoo services that you all help fund through the levy have gone up 79% in that period of time with flat levy. So doing it helps us make sure we're prepared for the future. And we're not asking the Commissioners to raise taxes. We are asking to pay close attention to the T L R C recommendation and put it on the ballot to see if the voters, if the elected voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you. You're supposed to be on this side. Usually she's over here. I was going this way, and then she moved and sat over here, she sat over there. Okay, Vice President Dreehouse, anything?
I don't have any questions. No, I'm anxious to hear from you.
I'm anxious to hear also, but while you were before us, I had just a couple of questions. I remember cutting out an article about a week ago about some infrastructure projects that you guys are doing, it's about three of them. And my question was, where does that money come from for the infrastructure?
Well, we, every year, run in the black. And regularly, every year is part of that, when there's a surplus, that surplus gets put back immediately to infrastructure projects and upgrades throughout the zoo. Bigger projects, like building a new elephant facility or a kangaroo facility, those funds are raised privately through families and foundations and corporations. But the infrastructure work and the major maintenance is through operating surplus. And the reason it goes back in is the zoo's 150 years old.
Okay. And just lastly, I keep bringing up the idea of having outside residents pay a little more. We want it to be affordable and reasonable, but I don't know if there would be a hesitancy of outside people just paying a little more, but you guys, for some reason, don't want to address raising the ticket price for outside residents.
And I'm sorry if I was unclear on that, but in essence, this situation, the offer of a discount to Hamilton County residents, creates that situation. But the background on it is, over time, the way we've been able to increase our success is by using dynamic pricing. If you get a ticket ahead of time, it can be the lowest price. If you wait until the day of, on a private Saturday, it's much more expensive. So we pay a lot of attention to pricing as it is. And the consultants, the outside, I just said that basically we are at the peak of where that could be in this market.
In this market. And I understand trying to make it affordable for us and having those special days, but for people that are on a big vacation planning on spending much more money, why not raise a ticket $2 or $3, which may supplement what you guys are trying to do somewhat?
And that's the whole process behind the dynamic pricing piece. And I'm not, my kids are grownups, so not familiar with everywhere, but I know that, you know, from King's Island Golf Course, if they do exactly that, that those prices go up to meet that barbed as best they can. So we're by no means intentionally holding it down. We have lots of opportunities for people who live in that region, if they can afford it, to come to a less expensive rate, including schools. So I think we work pretty hard at the pricing.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. As we go into the public comment, I just want to say that, and we said it downtown, this board, I don't think, I think everyone in here supports the zoo, so I want to start there. We have a tough position of decisions that we have to make in a totality, not in a silo. And we've got a lot of policies that we've passed, affordable housing, trying to make it affordable. And so when we ask the questions, it's not at a slight to anything, but as, for us to be able to ask the questions to have an understanding. And so I do think that the question of raising ticket prices is a one that is legitimate and should be on the table, because if we're wanting it to be affordable for the ticket goer to go to the zoo, we also want it to be affordable for the homeowner, who may or may not go to the zoo. So I think these are all questions that we have to take in, and we're here to hear from all of you, those who are here, those who could not be here as well. And I think it was some, I want to thank Thane for answering and addressing those questions, as well as addressing the questions of development, because this is questions that I received. I'm, Thane is not a, not surprised by that, because I've asked him about that. When people see all this development, they want to say, well, why don't we hold off on this development and hold that money instead of still developing and saying you need an increase? I want to also say that there are four options here. The one option is non-renewal, and I don't think that's any of us, but I want to put that out for any levy that comes forward. And then, of course, the three options are flat, a modest increase, and then a 15-year inflationary increase. So I wanted to say that for those who may be listening to us, who have not been able to make it with us today. So we're eager to hear from each of you, and each speaker would have two minutes. So the first speaker we have is Albert Smitherman, and of course, when the penguin comes in, they get special treatment.
First of all, thank the county Commissioners for having us today. The Cincinnati Zoo is working within their fences and outside of their fences within the community. Inside of the fences, they're working on education, employment partnerships, economic impacts on industry businesses, economic impact on employees, where it's not just a job, but a career, where employees can work outside the zoo with the skills they learned, or chase their own dreams. Outside of the fences, the zoo is working with community and educational outreach. They're working with community and education. They're working with STEM programs with kids in schools. Cincinnati Zoo, Cincinnati has a first-place soccer team, first-place baseball team, Super Bowl bound football team, number-one children's hospital in the country, and the best zoo in the country. The county is a major force in contributing to all of those organizations. And let's keep investing in each other and keep the whole network going. Once, Dan, thanks for listening to us and having us come on the screen.
Thank you. Dan Ash.
He was to be on Zoo, in that system.
Oh, no.
We have Zoo on now, but he's not on.
Okay.
So we can.
Somebody want to circle back, tell him to get back on? We'll hold his card and come back to him. Okay. Jerome Wright. Wright, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Jerome Wright here. Thank you Commissioners for having us here. Obviously, I'm in support of the zoo levy. It is, it's in a couple capacities. So I am not a Cincinnati native, so my first interaction with the zoo was when I was in college. I had friends that worked at the zoo. They, now, they are S B Award winners and things like that, so that zoo helped Black and Brown kids have college, college funding and things like that, so that is a big piece of that. In my capacity as well, I'm an Avondale native, who, Avondale resident, sorry, who is a homeowner. And I have my daughter here with me. We go to the zoo all the time. I have a zoo membership as well. She's going to the zoo camp. So we are big supporters of that. But in the, in my work capacity, I've worked at the zoo for over 10 years in our community makeup projects. And those projects are very instrumental in the community. Just a couple of years ago, we were in the community of Avondale, where we helped with the community garden, and it's one of the best-in-class gardens in the community, and those Cincinnati Public School students can learn to grow produce, sell produce, and make, make a difference in their community as well. This year, we're going to be in the Madison School community. I'm doing the same thing at Jopie Parker School, and making an impact there. So I think it will be awesome if we can get this passed, so the zoo can be a thriving part of the community as they have been for years, and I just want to support that as much as I can.
Thank you very much, but you've been upstaged, because the penguin is here.
Thank you for letting me come and speak. My name is Ricky Kenley, and this is Larkin, named after the great Cincinnati man Barry Larkin. It hatched out this year on March 18th, and Barry Larkin came a few days after his birthday, the name, this birthday. A little bit about me, I, so I've been born and raised Cincinnati, grew up here, all over Cincinnati, lived in a bunch of different neighborhoods. But when we lived in Pleasant Ridge, I actually remember watching zoos and zoo, walking around the street. I was inspired then to be a zookeeper. I got to see Thane Maynard and a lot of other zookeepers there. Little did I know back then that I wanted to be working with them. I've taken penguins to other events with them, so it's been quite a great career for me. So I've been at the Cincinnati Zoo now for 30 years. Went to high school there at the Zoo Academy, which is a high school for juniors and seniors, and I missed only one day of school during those two years, because I couldn't believe I was actually going to school at a zoo every single day. And so with those Zoo Academy students, me being one, I've worked with all those students for 30 years, and that's like pretty much my whole career. So they come and work in different areas of the zoo, in my area in particular, and I get to help mentor them about, teach them about animals, just teach them about workplace environments, that kind of stuff. Cincinnati Zoo is a great member of our community. You know, lots of school groups come to the Cincinnati Zoo, and they get inspired. This penguin, he had a rough upbringing, his parents had trouble feeding him, so we had to handraise him, hold from his parents and raise him, so he's quite comfortable. And then he has another Cincinnati connection, because he's connected to Barry Larkin, so. So thanks for letting me speak. Again, Cincinnati Zoo is a great member of our, our community, and you know, have a good day.
Thank you. Barry, would you like to say something? Thanks are beings.
This is actually his first time out away from the zoo, so.
Wow, he's doing great. And he's looking around, saying, what is this? All right.
Yeah, March 18th.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here. Okay, the next person has pressure. Are we going to Zoom, or are we gonna? How do you want to do it?
It suggested that I just call Dan Ash, he's the CEO of the National Zoo Association, the AZIAC. Can we just do it by audio?
Sure.
There we are, Dan. We're here with the county Commissioners, I'm going to put you on speaker and hold you next to their speakers. So this is Dan Ash, CEO of the Association of Zoos in Queret, you're in front of the three county Commissioners, you're in Hamilton County.
Hi, Dan.
Thank you. So it's a privilege to follow a penguin on the radio channel. So I am Dan Ash, I'm the president and CEO of the Association of Zoos in Queret, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, to the Tax Levy, to the Cincinnati Zoo, to Hamilton Garden. I'm proud to join the A Z A, I want to be on the service for five years, so I just want to keep on saying thank you for your service to the people of Cincinnati. I don't want to say that great cities have great zoos, Cincinnati, I think it's a lot of them, but your city, as your city, is one of the best in the world for the zoo. I think that's reflected in the A Z A accreditation. A Z A accreditation is a global standard for our modern psychological facility, maintain accreditation. The Cincinnati Zoo has done for over 30 years, requires commitment to excellence in animal care, guest service, conservation, research, education, communities, and more. And it reflects commitment to continued improvement, because as Aristotle said, excellence is not an act, but a habit. And maintaining excellence on a facility like Cincinnati Zoo requires a habit of continual investment in facilities and in people. So I hope you will, but to give Cincinnati Zoo resources that it deserves, to continue its record of innovation and innovation. I think that will be an ally in Cincinnati, and also it will help us continue to set a bar of high performance across the entire AZIAC membership, because Cincinnati Zoo is a leader among leaders. And the example of excellence in the base step helps us to show what is possible across our entire community. So I want to commend you for your service and thank you for what I have to do for Cincinnati Zoo, and at the same time, for our modern psychological community, help us to continue to show what is possible, and help us raise the bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Donald Hudson.
Can I leave my hat on? Say, let this on.
I had to ask the mayor.
But anyway, my name is Donald Hudson, I'm a Hamilton County resident. I've lived in College Hill since 1972. 23 years before that, I lived on Rockdale Avenue. And when I was a little kid, I remember walking to the zoo, and probably before that, my parents probably pushed me in a stroller. And I want you to remember some of these things about the stroller, okay? My wife and I both retired early to take care of our aged parents. Both my mother had crippling arthritis, her mother had a stroke, and both of them are fond of us, they called us. So we retired early. So even though we retired early and on fixed income, we support this industry. Got it? What goes around comes around. After a while, I ended up pushing my mother around here in the zoo. Pushing my mother around, and then I pushed my daughters and my granddaughter. And at the last festival of lights, I pushed my brother-in-law around, and we were cheering since past. We support the zoo and this levy, so that in a couple of years from now, somebody will be around, push me around, if I can, get one of those bottles. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
No questions. You got off the hook easy. Jean, can you pronounce your last name? I couldn't read it. I don't want to mess it up.
I'm hanging my stick here. It might stay in, it might not. There we go. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak about an important issue to our community. I'm Jean Bilterman, a lifelong Cincinnati West Side and Hamilton County resident. I think I see a familiar face.
Yeah, I didn't recognize you.
I'm here speaking in support of the zoo levy proposed for the November ballot. Have you and your family been to the zoo lately? I visit often. It offers amenity for all, including the disabled, both physical and emotional, and the less fortunate. It also has sensory-friendly facilities. The zoo is always inviting, clean, and well-maintained. The animals are well-cared-for by dedicated zoo personnel. Their conservation and sustainability efforts are outstanding. It's number one. It's an awesome and safe place to go for young and old. Not only it is a place to visit the wildlife, think Fiona, our city's ambassador, there's Fritz, Juno, a new gorilla troop, and fluffy flamingo chicks, a new gorilla troop, and think of a herd of wild elephants. But that's not all. It's a place just beautiful. We just got another award, too. Many people place the zoo at the top of their visiting list. Many people travel here from all over the U.S. and beyond, have come to see our zoo. My out-of-town family makes it a regular stop. The zoo is a great neighbor for all of Cincinnati. They give beyond their walls on Vine Street to many areas of our city. They are a great educational resource, and as a teacher, I appreciate that. So we in Hamilton County should help to keep our zoo number one. As a homeowner and a longtime zoo member, I support a tax levy for our zoo. And you know all the money numbers, but think, it's much less than a night out, think Burger Week. Thanks for listening, and let's place a levy on this ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yes, I'm Rose Andrea.
So Mrs. Bilterman, it's nice to see you. So I don't know what grade it was.
About 30 years ago, maybe.
Yeah, she taught me at St. Antonitus. It's nice to see you. Pulling out all the stops, Thane. Awesome. Deion Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today. Once again, my name is Deion Jackson. I work for SSA, and we are a partner in the Cincinnati Zoo. I work for SSA, and we are a partner in the Cincinnati Zoo. They have been amazing partners, by the way. Such an honor to be a part of a wonderful organization. I want to tell you a little story about me. I started working at the zoo when I was about sixteen and a half years old. And around that time, I had a pretty troubled upbringing. So working at the zoo was like a luxury for me. And as I kind of came here, it kind of provided me a sense of growth and motivation, almost like the beginning of high school. But coming here made me want to grow and have a career in my field. So fast forward to today, I graduated high school, but they were going to college. And then I got to do the hiring for all of our SSA staff. And we hired over four hundred people per year. And out of that four hundred people, over seventy percent come to Hamilton County area. And we do take pride in giving back to our local communities, on jail fairs, visiting local schools, and making sure we're doing our own, doing our part, and giving back. With that being said, we want to continue to be the number one zoo in America, and a part of that is giving back to our people, and making sure we're developing, and giving an opportunity for all our staff. So thank you so much for having us today. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Zimmer.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to address you on an issue important to our community. My name is Kaylee Zimmer, and I'm here speaking in support of the proposed increase to the zoo's levy. I'm here representing the zoo's zoo team program. I am currently a second-year supervisor for the program, and I was a zoo team volunteer for four years. The zoo team program is amazing. It is for zoo teams to volunteer at the zoo, gain leadership skills, confidence, and a love of nature. If you go to the zoo, you can see the zoo teams spread all throughout the park, speaking with guests from all over the country, spreading conservation messages, and putting smiles on countless faces. Personally, I credit this program with my success in my young adult life. When I started as a new volunteer, I never would have thought I would have the incompetence just to speak to a group like you today. I was so nervous, I didn't tell my supervisors that they were pronouncing my name wrong for a whole year. One of the goals that we have for our teams is to help them grow and become the best version of themselves. And the way we do this is by coaching them rather than criticizing them. I remember being coached as a zoo team, and it definitely helped me gain confidence and become the best version of myself. As my years continued in the program, I became a leader. I started coaching younger teens, and I loved coaching them because I loved helping the teens who were nervous like I once was. Additionally, my fear of public speaking began to fade. I was much more comfortable talking to large groups of guests, and I even won a speech competition at my high school, which really boosted my English grade. And I have been offered a leadership position at the Ohio State University, only going into my second year at the Environment and Natural Resources Scholars Program. I know that with the skill sets I have gained at the Cincinnati Zoo, I have the goals, the skills to be successful and reach the goals that I have for myself in the future. As a zoo team supervisor, I have the best job in the world, because I get to help coach the next generation of zoo teams and watch them grow into confident young adults ready to take on the world. As someone who has lived in Cincinnati my whole life, I think that we should support this, because not only do we have the best zoo in America, but we also support amazing programs like the zoo teams, which supports two-hundred-and-fifty zoo teams every single year. Thank you again for your time, and we look forward to getting this on the ballot.
Thank you. Let me say, if you didn't tell us you were shy, you were awesome. Awesome, thank you. Kathy Crane. Hello, welcome. We need to have more of these. That's how we get to see you, have all these town halls.
Absolutely. Enjoy every moment of it, Charlie. And Lisa, thank you for that review. And I'm just going to remind the commissioners, in my talk, a little bit more of the process, so that we all remember that. As you know, the zoo spent many months working with your advisors on levies, the TLRC, making sure that they had all the information needed to determine whether the zoo would be recommended for an inflationary increase. The audit, which as you also know, is used to determine the financial viability of a company, as well as its sustainability, was completed, and we far exceeded the financial stress tests required by any audit. We also met the requirements of the mission of the TLRC, which is for all levy recipients to be innovative, creative, and be excellent stewards of the levy funds. We obviously exceeded all of those as well. They then determined that we were a benefit through their consultants, both economically and socially to the county, and recommended to you that the zoo receive an inflationary increase. We appreciate your committee, the TLRC, for taking the time and doing their due diligence. I understand, and this is from me now, as that was as well, but that was just a history, but I understand the commissioners' concern for affordable housing in the community, we all do. It's critically important. But it is not the twelve dollars and ninety-eight cents for a hundred thousand dollar a year for the zoo that is the issue, or that will change affordable housing in the county of Hamilton. In fact, it is assets like the zoo, number one in the country. Number-one children's hospital, our sports teams, our libraries, our parks, they are what make our community livable, one where property values move up, and people want to move here and raise their families, and ultimately live out their lives. A few years back, there was a recommended thirty-two percent increase for the mental health services levy, and thank God, it passed by the voters. The commissioners stated that at that time, we are only voting to put it on the ballot, so it can go to the people. The people will have the final say. I would say in a country where voting is becoming quite a critical issue, that giving the people the right to determine how they spend their money, and for what they think is important, is what our leaders need to be doing. Please, let the voters decide on this increase for their beloved zoo. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Trossard.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Carol Trossard, and I'm a resident of Hamilton County. I grew up in Evendale, and my family went regularly, if not often, to the zoo, and that helped begin my love of animals and wildlife generally. And as a teenager, I was very fortunate to be in the zoo's first youth education program, which taught me lots about zoos, zoo animals, but also about nature in the Cincinnati area. And that has been a big influence on my entire life, in terms of pursuing my interest and commitment to the environment, wherever I've lived in the course of my life. I moved around quite a lot across the country during my career, continued to come back and visit town and family, which were alive then. And I've been so impressed by how the zoo, with its circumscribed footprint in the city, has been so resourceful at finding ways to continue to be on the cutting edge of caring for animals and the kind of exhibits that animals have, and finding ways to use their limited area to continue to do that. And also, I've been learning over time about the amazing conservation work they do, both locally in the Cincinnati area and around the world. And all of those things make it an amazing resource to the city. When I retired two years ago, and thought about where I was going to live, because I was not living here at the time, my connection to the zoo and my view of it as a resource was a big part of my decision to move back to Cincinnati, where I bought a house in Woodline. And I'm now involved in a variety of, I volunteer at the zoo, I volunteer with other local environmental organizations. This is not a large amount of money, it's the sort of thing I, for one, am happy to pay more money for, and I do hope that you will put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Green.
Hello, how are you all?
Hello.
So I'm Pam Green, I'm the president and CEO of Easter Seals Redwood, and I'm here tonight to express my support, of course, for the levy. So I think many of you are aware, at Easter Seals Redwood, our mission is to advance one-hundred-percent equity, access, and inclusion for people with disabilities, for people in poverty, and for veterans in our community. And for more than a decade, I can tell you, we have not had a better partner than the Cincinnati Zoo. I love the zoo, and it's not because of their amazing animal exhibits, or their amazing botanical gardens, or the fact that they're the greatest zoo in America. It's because they share our vision for what this community can be. And so I will tell you, the zoo has provided employment opportunities to our clients for more than a decade. And when we've had employers that say, we would love to have people with disabilities come volunteer and learn job skills, the zoo has said, we would love to have people with disabilities come learn how to work, and we're going to pay it. They will earn while they learn. And to me, that says so much about who the zoo is. And I sit here tonight, I listen to all these partners, and really, I can't, I really can't think of many people in our community that are doing more to advance equity, access, and inclusion than our zoo. And as a nonprofit leader, I can tell you, it is, it's hard to go from good to great based on the whim of donors or restricted grant funding. This is a crown jewel for Hamilton County, and this is the kind of thing that we need to support. So I would just ask that each of you express your support to put this to the voters in Hamilton County. So, thank you.
Thank you. George Malowski. George, you don't have to say hello to all of us, it takes up your time. You only get two minutes. Last time you were, you were saying how great we were, we appreciated, then your time was up. Then we're like, time's up, he's got to go. Welcome, George.
It started at nine o'clock, it hasn't started.
No, it hasn't started. Welcome.
Well, good evening, and thank you President Lee, and Commissioners Drehouse and Dumas. I think everyone knows I'm the chairman of the zoo. This is our last opportunity to present to you, and I want to once again publicly express the zoo's appreciation to you and to all the many participants in this process. Been a lot of hard work, appreciate everyone's contributions. The last time we were together, it was just a few days before the Taylor Smith concert. It was really great vibe in that room, it really was special. And not only did you pass a resolution honoring that awesome event, but this commission at that time took a moment to step back and recognize the context of that moment. We're in a community riding high, in terms of first-place Reds, first-place FC Cincinnati, Super Bowl, aspiring Bengals, Cincinnati Children's, who's just been named number-one hospital just before that week. And I thought it was very fitting for us. We actually weren't, we were there, of course, we were there, but it was fitting for us, you know, to be there. And that's because, you know, the zoo's number one. And so we, you know, we were really delighted to be part of that, that special moment. So, something I've learned since then, there are two-hundred-and-fifty zoos that are accredited. We've heard from Dan Ash tonight about just how hard it is. We've heard, you've heard before in the meetings, how much investment and time and attention to be in the accredited zoo. I didn't know that two-hundred-and-fifty can meet that standard. We're at the top of that, as Dan asked, the best of the best. What does that mean? You've heard tonight from all these different people about all these things that are critical to be number one. It is not easy. And here we are, with our number-one partner, seven million dollars a year. You know, pick a number of years, use of math, ten years, seventy million dollars of our operating by. How can we do these things without seventy million dollars? As you look forward, inflation erodes that number. That number's going down with the effects of inflation, it's real, as Stain said, and it's high right now. So how can we expect it to continue to be number one going forward of our number-one partner? We don't have that stable, strong relationship going forward, that economic relationship is critical to us. So we ask that you allow the voters to make, to make that decision, to maintain that partnership with inflationary increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I want to thank Woodline for hosting us. But before we close out, I want to go to Vice President Drehouse, have any comments?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank everybody for coming. It really does help us get a view of what's the community voice behind the discussion that we're having related to the levies. So thank you all for coming out, really appreciate it. Also, I want to reiterate my gratitude to the TLRC for the many, many hours of work that they put in, especially the subcommittee related to the zoo levy, because they really did a fine job with this. And also Lisa and the team at the county, it's a lot of work to get us ready for these levies, and so we really appreciate it. I want to reiterate what Commissioner Reese said, we have seven levies in the county that are under the control of the commissioners. Some of them are not, the library, the parks, and others. So this is not an easy decision for us, because we have to weigh all things. But your testimony really does help us try to create the right balance for the community. So thanks again for coming.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for coming out. You could be anywhere, but this is obviously very important to you, and I certainly appreciate all the comments that have come forth. Cincinnati Zoo, in my opinion, is the number-one zoo. I was raised at the zoo. I lived one skip hop, and not even a jump, right across the street. And when I was little, I'd sit on the wall, it was a rock wall, my sister and I would sit there, and this was sixty years ago, and I remember my mom, it was a gorilla coming over the fence. That's before Thane took care of everything. And I remember my mom saying, don't run, just come slow, slowly. And so, and that's a true story. And also, I remember living in our house right there, and you could hear the lions and tigers, I don't know about the bears. But, so it's just near and dear to my heart. So for me, it's not a question about whether or not this is a great zoo. It is a great zoo, and you guys do great things. So thank you so much for coming.
Mr. Aludo, anything?
No, nothing. Lisa, do you want to just briefly, do you have anything, next steps in terms of process you want to talk about, because I know we have the August eighth deadline with the, no, August ninth with the Board of Elections. Just want to walk us through the process real quick?
Really, the next step from here is for the commissioners to kind of figure out on their own where they want to put the zoo ad for sizing. We have three resolutions prepared right now with those three options. The always, the option of no levy, which would be no resolution. The option of a renewal with no increase, which would be nine dollars per hundred thousand dollar home at point four-six mils. A renewal and an increase in line with five-year inflation, which is point four-eight mils, and would cost a hundred thousand dollar home ten dollars. And a renewal with an increase in line with the fifteen-year inflation, which would be point five-seven mils, and would cost the owner of a hundred thousand dollar home thirteen dollars a year. We will have those prepared for presentation at the August seventh meeting. If there are any other amounts for consideration from the commissioners, we would request that we get those as soon as possible, because we would need the auditor to certify those in advance of that meeting on the seventh, so they would be, need to be approved by the commission at their meeting the twenty-sixth? Is that the Thursday?
Twenty-seventh, I believe.
The seventh is what we're...
The seventh meeting in July. It could be twenty-seventh.
It's a Monday.
No. Are you asking about the last meeting? Or we're actually voting on August seventh.
Yes, but if the, if the commission wants to look at another, a third option, fourth option for resolution, we would need to have a certificate prepared and approved by the commission in advance of the meeting on the seventh, so that would need to be done on that last meeting in July.
Okay. Can you appoint a clarification for those who are watching, when you say ten dollars or what have you, is that the total, or is that the increase on what you're already paying?
That is the total for an annual amount on a hundred thousand dollar home.
Okay.
So it is, a renewal would be, the total cost on the tax dollars for a hundred, for a hundred thousand dollar home is nine dollars. A renewal with five-year inflation increase, it would be ten dollars total. And a renewal with an increase in line with inflation, that fifteen-year that's been spoken about this evening, would be thirteen dollars total on the tax bill for a hundred thousand dollar home. Double that for a two-hundred thousand dollar home, half that for a fifty thousand dollar home.
Do they even have fifty thousand dollar homes anymore? I'm sorry, it's just another subject. Definitely not in Woodline, the mayor said. Commissioner Dumas, you had a question?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just had a question. You were saying if the commission came up with a different option.
Yes.
I'm thinking it would still have to go to the auditor to be certified, so that would...
Yes, that's, that's the piece that would need to be done by that last meeting in July.
That could still happen.
Once again, thank you, Woodline, for hosting us. Thank you, Lisa, and your team, because like you said, it's not the easiest thing with levies. So thank you very much. TLRC, thank you, and thank you to the citizens. And I want to thank all the citizens of Hamilton County who has been supporting the zoo levy. You said it, you've come before us ten times. And so we've got to thank the residents of Hamilton County as well. There was, are we supposed to get a plan? They said some plan we would be getting before we would vote on this.
The plan was the amounts for the membership discounts, which thing you presented.
Oh, that was the plan.
Ten dollars on an annual membership for Hamilton County residents as a discount, and two dollars on a daily rate for Hamilton County residents.
Okay, so that's the plan. Okay. All right, if there's no further business to come before us, we love you, Woodline, but we're going to have to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes?
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
I had a question.
I'm sorry.
And I didn't, but we had a plan for membership for us, but my question is, is there a plan or can there be a plan for membership outside of our region? And do we, can we have that in writing?
For an additional, like the increase that you mentioned.
Exactly.
As I could conversation.
I think it would be, so we can look at all of it. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Send that to you tomorrow.
Okay. That's quick. I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Additionally, I'll remark, I was looking through the consultant's report during the presentations, and I'll remark the specific pages, and it's about a hundred-page report that referenced the attendance and the numbers for Hamilton County residents and non-residents, and what other zoos in our region do for discounts.
Okay. Okay. We're going to take the motion off the table. Mr. Aludo, I'm sorry, we just love being here with you. We're not leaving.
No, Madam President, I was going to say, as you motioned to adjourn, probably want to motion to close the public hearing and adjourn.
Oh, that sounds so good. So, so great. Okay, let me say it one more time. Vice President Drehouse, do you have anything?
I do not.
Commissioner Dumas, you got anything?
Well, I was thinking about when I was.
You go say the giraffe came after on Red Hood or something. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I did, it was one thing, though, I was so little that I could, you know, the fence, I could kind of get in and go, but I never, my mom caught me. It's such great memories, really.
Thane doesn't want to hear that. He wants to pay memberships.
Okay, liability.
Okay. All right, everybody. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Let's do it.